Come to order, is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, legal negotiations, property acquisition issues, Article 24, Section 4, Dash 210A, 1, 5, 8, and 11.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The Board of Education will now enter into executive session.
I.
All right. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Dr. Marterano, the meeting is yours.
Okay. Board members, good morning.
Good morning.
The floor is now open for nominations for the office of Chairman of the Board of Education for St. Mary's County.
I nominate Dr. Raspa for Chairman of the Board of Education of St. Mary's County.
Dr. Raspa, your name has been entered in for the nomination for the office of Chairman for the Board of Education for St. Mary's County. Do you accept the nomination for Chairman?
Yes, I accept the nomination for Chairman of the Board of Education for the 2014 year. Yes.
At this point, are there any other nominations for Chairman of the Board of Education? See none? All those in favor of Dr. Salvatore Raspa for the office of Chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? A unanimous decision, congratulations, Dr. Raspa.
Thank you very much.
Round of applause for him. The floor is now open for the nomination for the office of Vice Chairman for the Board of Education in St. Mary's County.
I nominate Brooke Matthews for Vice Chair for the Board of Education.
Mr. Brooke Matthews, your name has been submitted as the nominee for the office of Vice Chairman for the Board of Education in St. Mary's County. Do you accept the nomination for Vice Chairman?
Yes, I accept the nomination for Chairman of the Board of Education for the 2014 year.
At this point, are there any other nominations for Chairman of the Board of Education? See none? All those in favor of Dr. Salvatore Raspa for the office of Chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? A unanimous decision, congratulations, Dr. Raspa.
Thank you very much.
Round of applause for him.
Yay.
The floor is now open for the nomination for the office of Vice Chairman for the Board of Education in St. Mary's County.
I nominate Brooke Matthews for Vice Chair for the Board of Education.
Mr. Brooke Matthews, your name has been submitted as the nominee for the office of Vice Chairman for the Board of Education in St. Mary's County. Do you accept the nomination for Vice Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for the, for Vice Chairman? See none? All those in favor of Mr. Brooke Matthews for the office of Vice Chairman for the Board of Education for St. Mary's County, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a unanimous decision, congratulations, Mr. Brooke Matthews as Vice Chairman of the Board of Education. Board members, that completes my official duties of the, for the nominations and the elections. Is there a motion to return to the regular rules with Dr. Raspa assuming the duties of Chairman of the Board of Education?
I move a return to the regular rules with Dr. Raspa assuming the duties.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Raspa, back to you.
Board members, thank you very much. Thank you for your support, confidence, your vote of confidence. I will continue to do the very best I possibly can, and thank you for allowing me to continue in this role. Mr. Matthews, congratulations to you.
Thank you, sir. May I say a couple things? I appreciate the support. Thank you very much, guys. I'm gonna try my best as usual. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Take the ayes, have it. Board reports. Peter?
All right, morning, everybody. I just want to start off with talking about a past event. It was the Maryland Association of Student Councils had the fall, their Fall Leadership Conference at Lindonor High School. The Fall Leadership Conference is, it's a leadership, it's a full day, took a Saturday off, and it's a day full of leadership workshops hosted by the different trainers who were the students throughout the state of Maryland. In this county, Chopticon was the only high school to send delegates to the Fall Leadership, the Fall Leadership Conference this year. We had a great day. It was full of different workshops that we attended, different workshops talking, different species like diversity, recycling, and community awareness, and also a bullying workshop, which I, I attended, a great learning experience. I also want to talk about the Southern Maryland Association of Student Councils. We had our executive board meeting two weeks ago to talk about the meeting that was supposed to be upheld yesterday at Leonardtown High School, which is rescheduled for the 17th of December, next Tuesday. We were going to be talking about our, our committees that we're going to be working on this year, which were the Maryland Food Bank, the Three Oaks Homeless Shelter, and Christmas in April, as well as talk, we're now accepting the different applications for the student member on the Board of Education for next year, and for the different offices for the associated student councils for this county. Also, I wanted to mention Flow Mentoring Program, Margaret Brent, that Chopticon High School has been helping out with. We've been sending three students through the SGA to go to Margaret Brent and tutor the kids after school and help them with their homework. The kids that feel like they want to stay after school to work with their homework over the week, and we send, in fact, I went as well to the school and talked with the kids and helped them with their homework, and really connected, and talked to them about things like high school, what it's like to move on from that middle school stage, and, and really just to be, be an older mentor, someone they can look up to. Finally, I always talk about bullying a little bit in my reports. I wanted to talk about actually this movie documentary that I saw earlier this week, and it was actually a big film. It was all particularly on the west coast, and the movie was called Bully, and it's documentary of, from a student's vantage point, of documenting many different students across the country that addressed the effects of bullying that they had on these students. Now, some of the documentaries were about the parents who had unfortunately lost their child due to school bullying, who their child committed suicide from it, and it talks about how, how much of an effect that bullying has or had on their children, how they really wanted to address the problem. And what, what really hit me as being the student member of the Board of Education was with each documentary and each story that it told, it had the little, the side bit that their school systems that their child had been to didn't really go on and address the issue of bullying that was in their county until tragedy struck. And that, that really is, just to stress the point that you can't wait to change something that's being done until something horrible happens. You need to, you need to take action as soon as you notice it, and plan, and then take action. And when it comes to the event of students losing their lives, taking their lives, and other students bullying them, it, it's a really serious issue that I really hope this, this board in this county takes into effect, because it can be completely devastating to an entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Mrs. Crosby.
On a higher, higher note, my husband and I attended the Madrigal Concert at Chopticon High, Chopticon, yeah, Chopticon High School, it was in a church. The dinner was absolutely great. The choral performance also was very, very, very good. The company was good. Kirby Pence sat with us. Actually, a parent came to the school and her husband that attended last year to support the chorus and their child that had already graduated, which is, speaks highly. We bought a door decoration there to support the chorus, but we've gone every year since I've been on the board, and it's very, very good, so if you ever have a chance to attend, I'm sure they'll have it every year, go ahead and do that, it's a good thing to do. And as far as the bullying goes, Peter, I have a story to tell you, but not right now, the whole place would probably go up in flames. But I was on the ground, and the mother said, "Go over and kick her," and they did, they came over and started kicking me. And my grandfather pulled off the bully and said, "Go get a Marilyn Ann," that's how I went by Marilyn Ann, and I did, and I chased him all the way into the house. And sometimes you have to, that's me, you have to take things in your, if you can, if you can, you have to defend yourself, and sometimes you can't defend yourself, and that's when you go, "Get your grandpa." Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Mr. Matthew.
I also had a lovely evening at the Madrigal Dinner. We went on Friday night. Ms. Sarah Lorek, it was Vince, last year, so she's been, she's had a busy year.
Yes, she has.
But boy, if this dinner doesn't put you in the Christmas spirit, I don't know what will. The kids were great. Dinner was wonderful. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mrs. Washington.
Thank you. St. Mary's County Public School, schools have graduated thousands and thousands of students who have gone on to be successful in college and careers. These students are successfully contributing to make their community, state, nation, or even the world a better place for all people. Our students are successful in all areas of work, from entrepreneurs, engineers, entertainers, teachers, lawyers, cashiers, food service workers, to surgeons, and countless other fields. I heard from one of our outstanding students and former 2003, 2004 Student Board of Education member, Atka Segal. I will share some of our conversation, it is worth hearing. It is a testament to our outstanding teachers, administrators, support staff, community, family, and the student herself. She's just one example of thousands of our students who have built upon the strong educational foundation and opportunities provided at St. Mary's County Public Schools, which was already preparing students to be college and career ready as far back as I can remember. College and career readiness is not a new concept in St., for this Board of Education or St. Mary's County Public Schools. So, after graduating from SMCPS, Atka was accepted at the University of Missouri in Kansas City in the six-year M.D. program. She graduated in 2010 with a B.S. degree in Spanish and an M.D. in Ear, Nose, and Throat, E.N.T. After completing the M.D. program in Missouri, she was accepted in a five-year residency at the University of Illinois at Chicago. She will complete the five-year residency program in 2015, where she will be an experienced and exemplary ear, nose, and throat surgeon who performed the surgical treatment of diseases, injuries, or deformities of the ears, nose, throat, head, and neck area. I am very proud of all of our students, regardless of their career, as long as they are law-abiding, productive, and contributing members of society. We need citizens with many different interests and talents, talents to make society work well. I am always interested in our students to know how they are doing and what they are doing. There are many success stories out there, and I believe the superintendent and the Board of Education wants to hear from our students. Whenever I see our students during summer break, winter break, or whenever they're in town, I want to know how they are doing and what they are doing, and what we can do to make students' journey better at SMCPS. Therefore, I encourage our students to email, to speak at public comment, to write, or use any means necessary to stay in touch with us. On another note, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday. I wish you all love, peace, and prosperity today and every day. Enjoy time with your family, friends, and your faith. God bless all of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington.
Thank you.
So many students who we know of, and that have been through the school system, and very, very successful.
Very successful.
And, and at all levels, and they are out there, and there's so many of them, we just don't know what they're doing, but I always like, just to add on to what you were saying, I always like to talk about the student who created so much havoc at school, the Great Mills High School, almost got expelled at one time. He wrote me this letter 15 years later. He is a practicing neurosurgeon in Florida. Sent me a picture of his family, had three children, lovely wife, so you just don't know what happens to people, you know? So, very refreshing story, you know, Peter.
What turned him around, Dr. Raspa, do you know?
It was my counseling, I think.
Of course. Why did I even need to ask that question?
I was, I was, I was principal of Great Mills High School at the time, and his mother was so embarrassed, I felt so sorry for her. But in any event, it's amazing how people do change, how, how young people, as they get older, their minds change, and their ideas of goal-setting change, and it's absolutely amazing. I started in my own family with five sons, and everyone is different, and very, very interesting. Lot of heartache sometimes, but anyway, that's another story, but people do change, and it's amazing, it's like you say, Mrs. Washington, contribute to society, try to make society better for everyone, and that's a good thing.
Very good.
Mrs. Allen.
Just to follow on for that, with that for a moment, change in people is not, and growth is not limited to, to the young. I think if we're, if we're good human beings, we always can embrace change. The, you've already heard about the Madrigal Dinner. I'm so pleased because in many school systems across the country, they are choosing to dispense with the arts. Even in this state, there are school systems where an art teacher is only in a classroom working with students once every nine weeks. We, as an organization, as a board, have determined that art is integral to the education process. It sparks creativity. There are so many benefits to it, and to that end, not only were we able to experience the Madrigal Dinner, I was there with Mr. Matthews and Dr. Raspa and Mrs. Washington on Friday night, but the other thing that happened just recently was the handoff ceremony of Maryland Masters pieces of art between Dr. Marterano and comptroller Peter Francho. And the examples of art that were, were handed off to him to hang in his office for two months were just extraordinary, one at the elementary school level, one at the middle school level, and one at the high school level. And there were some pictures online, I believe, that really captured the, the artwork that was, was handed off. I believe I saw it on the BayNet, and just really beautiful, especially the, the high school work. As you looked at the maturation process, the piece that was done from the elementary school student to the middle school student to the high school student, you could really see growth and change, though it wasn't the same student. You could see the, the age level coming through, and, and the, the high school piece that was shown was just really striking. We all commented about it. And so, to that end, I would like to say to the superintendent, but especially to those who participate and who offer the fine arts in our school system, thank you, because I think that we have seen wonderful examples most recently of, of how well-rounded an experience our students have, and I'm very pleased to be a part of that, because I think that it, it adds to all of us when we can appreciate the arts, and, and just a beautiful job recently.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. I've also attended all these programs. The Madrigal Dinner was, was really beautiful. The students really did a superb job.
Yes, they did.
And the singing, and the voices.
And the costumes, extraordinary.
Yeah.
I think they made their own costumes.
Everyone should attend. You're right, Mrs. Crosby, maybe next year more of the community members will, you know, attend, and it's very well done, and very, very nice, and the singing, and beautiful, beautiful. We really have some talent.
Well, I went, there was not an extra seat. I don't know if it was that way at the first night or not.
Well, they had a lot of chairs there, I'm sure. It, it was, it was very well attended Friday night.
Okay, I was just wondering.
It really was. The, the artwork, beautiful. And some of us can draw a straight line with a ruler, and it's amazing what some of our youngsters can do.
They're natural, son.
I also went to Saturday morning, Shop With A Cop, at the Mission BBQ, and it was attended very well, and the police were there, the sheriff was there, and people bought gifts, you know, to hand out to youngsters that just have a lot less than most people have in the community. So, that's also a good program, and I hope that everyone continues to support that program, Shop With A Cop. It's an excellent program, and if anybody needs further verification, please call the sheriff. He, he wants to talk to people about it, and he wants people to help with it, so, great program in our community. We have so many great things going on in our community, and so many of these things are just not publicized, unfortunately, but hopefully, we will continue, and, and the newspapers will continue, the media will continue to get information out to everybody, and that'll be good.
I think Saturday is Breakfast with Santa, the Forest Center.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Eight to eleven.
Eight to eleven. I'll see you there.
Okay. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Marterano, your turn.
Wow, there's so much, you know, to say, so let me just dig in here, building on the conversation about the arts. Keep in mind that at a time when those school systems are cutting, and there's cutback on that, that we've expanded. If you remember during the State of the School System Address, I advanced the whole exploration of the Fine Arts Academy that we're going to advance as well, the Need for Dance, just continue to push that, and I continue to be driven by the quote in Mr. Holland's opus when they were considering cutting the arts, and Mr. Holland stands in front of the school board and says, basically, "If you cut the arts, you cut creativity, and what will students have to read and write about?" So, think about the creative mind and the importance of that, and all the studies are out there about students who participate in the arts, music, it's a whole different part of the brain that's being used when you're learning how to read music and you're singing, that the whole development of left brain, right brain, and the whole conversation about the studies with students who are exposed to classical music. All those things add to the IQ and add to performance, and it makes good sense. I mean, research has proven it over and over in terms of the creative mind, and if you recognize, you know, our goals and expectations of our vision plan is to always stimulate that piece of it. The 21st century thinking skills are all focused in, on imagination and creativity, problem solving, think outside the box, as opposed to the rigid box of, you know, this is how you just do one way of doing a problem. And I think back to a conversation I had with a teacher many years ago, who was so excited, and she brought into me 30 depictions of artwork, and they were 30 depictions of a sunflower, all done the same way, and she was so happy. And I was very kind and gentle to her by providing her feedback, by saying, "I wasn't happy," because obviously what was done was, it was done on an overhead projector, draw the line, follow along, draw the leaf, and they were all the same. There was no creativity. So, we had a long conversation about allowing students to be able to explore their own space and their creative mind and expression, and we saw that in the Master of Arts Award Program that was sponsored by comptroller Francho, and the programs and the pieces that we sent up. I'm going to ask Jeff, who's not here, to follow up. What I made a commitment to the students was that when that's displayed in Annapolis, I make several trips up, up there, as you know as well as you do for state meetings, I'm going to go into the gallery and take pictures of them on display so I can show to the students. More than likely, our students won't have that opportunity to travel up there themselves and see it, so that we can show them as well. But I wanted to piggyback on that. Yes, we do have the Shop With A Cop, there's another Shop With A Cop activity, correct, Dr. Ridgell, on Saturday that coincides with the Breakfast with Santa on Saturday, and I'll be trying to divide myself up to do both of those on Saturday, and many of you are participating in all of these events. There was also a wonderful event at George Washington Carver, and one on Great Mills, we were all out dividing and covering all the different events, but a very quiet event, and I want people to know about it right now. We didn't publicize this in advance, but for the last several years, George Washington Carver, as well as Lexington Park, has gone through and, and taken up donations within their own communities, and to the individuals who are less fortunate in their communities, they've opened up their school to basically do shopping for free of charge of all the items that are donated, and it was a very moving day for me to watch that outpouring of, just in terms of giving, the things that were occurring, and then the families that truly need what was provided for them. So, in this season of giving, that we really always need to focus on the less fortunate, we always need to make certain that we're making people's day, and carrying all that positive energy forward in that sense of recognizing those individuals who don't have what a lot of individuals do. And I'll use that as an opportunity to talk about what I said at the State of the School System Address, which was, you know, our free and reduced meals rate is up to, close to 33%, you know, in that sense. We've gone up steadily, and think about, I always think about it in moments of time, that when I became superintendent in 2005, that was 23, 24%. So, his graduation rate has gone up to 90%, a 5% gain during that period of time. Suspensions have gone down, our free and reduced meals rate has gone up as well. And again, I emphasize this point over and over, but to emphasize a point, poverty is a great, you know, issue across the county. It doesn't, it's not just isolated to certain parts of the community, and I think some of our citizens think, well, that's just in parts of our community. No, our free and reduced meals rate cuts across all of our schools. All of our schools are in double digits, no school is in single digits, and that means we have those pockets of poverty all throughout, and we have to treat it as such. own communities, and to the individuals who are less fortunate in their communities, they've opened up their school to basically do shopping for free of charge of all the items that are donated. And it was a very moving day for me to watch that outpouring of, just in terms of giving, the things that were occurring, and then the families that truly need what was provided for them. So, in this season of giving, that we really always need to focus on the less fortunate. We always need to make certain that we're making people's day, and carrying all that positive energy forward, in that sense of recognizing those individuals who don't have what a lot of individuals do. And I'll use that as an opportunity to talk about what I said at the State of the School System Address, which was, you know, our free and reduced meals rate is up to close to 33 percent, you know, in that sense. We've gone up steadily. And think about, I always think about it in moments of time, that when I became superintendent in 2005, that was 23, 24 percent. So, his graduation rate has gone up to 90 percent, a 5 percent gain during that period of time. Suspensions have gone down. Our free and reduced meals rate has gone up as well. And again, I emphasize this point over and over, but to emphasize a point, poverty is a great, you know, issue across the county. It doesn't, it's isolated to certain parts of the community. And I think some of our citizens think, well, that's just in parts of our community. No, our free and reduced meals rate cuts across all of our schools. All of our schools are in double digits. No school is in single digits, and that means we have those pockets of poverty all throughout. And we have to treat it as such, and recognize what we can do to the individuals who are with less humble means, per se. And I always say, you know, in general, we're going to be defined, you know, as a community, how we take care of the less fortunate and those who need. So, in this, you know, in this time of great celebration and giving, we have to also recognize it's a very stressful time for individuals who can't provide, a lot of emotional stress during this period of time, increase in a lot of kind of emotional issues, and pressure for people to feel like they have to be involved in the materialistic parts of the holiday. You know, great pressure to give, you know, gifts and things such as that. And, you know, I'm always looking for the gift of, you know, the gift of time, the gift of kindness, the gift of, you know, from the heart are more meaningful for me than any materialistic gift in that sense. You know, the gift of all our children achieving and being safe are the gifts of taking care of the individuals are so important during this time. And a reminder, and I know this, this board gets that, but I think it also defines our overall culture and our philosophy and our value system, that this is a board that takes care of children in the sense of more than just the academic preparation, but the well-being as well. And all of you have echoed that through your comments today, and I'm very proud. Congratulations, Dr. Raspa and Mr. Matthews, for your, once again, being elected to the board chairmanship and vice chairmanship. I meet with your chairman and vice chairman on a regular basis, as you know. We prepare for the meetings, set the agenda, and the communications are very, very collaborative in that sense, a very cohesive board. And I'm very thankful during the holidays that we have a board such as all of you representing the citizens of St. Mary's County, something to be very thankful for as advocates of the student need and the public trust and the issues that are occurring. So, I just wanted to say that as we end this calendar year in this spirit, but let me continue with all the other issues, too. So, all of you who were paying attention yesterday, wore your pajamas inside out, all those things that you did. Contrary to popular belief, we don't just close for rain, but, you know, we get, we, so that was a faux snow day. That was practice, that was dress rehearsal for the big events coming. I follow a lot of different models, in the sense of, I should say, weather models. I want that to come out correctly. Happily married for 30 years, I might add.
You and the president.
I want to make sure, how many people were thinking what I just said there? I follow a lot of different weather models, in that sense. And now, I'm probably all red.
Yes, yes.
So, on that sense.
How do you like Victoria's Secret?
Well, anyhow, so I do follow those. Brad Clements, our deputy superintendent, as well as many of his staff members are up early. We start communicating as early as 3:00, 3:30, 4 o'clock. Those conversations were occurring Monday, Sunday into Monday, Monday into Tuesday. Keep in mind, community members, anybody in this community, recognize that during my tenure, I'm always going to err on the side of the safety of our children, the safety of our staff, and the safety of our community. Because when, as I say figuratively and literally, when I hit that switch every day to start the school system, we start as early as 5:00, 5:30, turning those buses on. And when that machine starts rolling, we're putting 200 to 265 buses during that course of the day out there transporting our children, the number of students driving, the number of parents that move into action. And we have 18, close to 18,000 young people in the district, you know, another 2,000 to 3,000 employees, full-time and part-time, parents who are moving during that time. And we've got to make certain that individuals are safe. So, I was waiting for, just like all of you, I did see a few flakes in the afternoon. The sun came out, and the good news is that nobody was injured and everybody was safe if you follow those weather models. It's set up to be a cold winter with some unusual patterns. You know, again, a lot of those southern storms will affect us more so. The cold weather just didn't come down as far yesterday. So, keep in mind, we built five days in. We used one, you know, in that sense, and again, made the right and correct decision judiciously in that sense. And again, I make those decisions early in the morning, but the sort of fascinating thing is that I've said, if you really want to find out the first and accurate information, Peter, I know you're following me as well, on my Twitter account. My Twitter account blew up yesterday. I increased my Twitter following by 200 yesterday for the number, because I said, as soon as I make the decision, Mr. Clements is starting all of his activities, and there's a lag, you know, in terms of putting things on the website, putting things out to the television and radio, and on Channel 96, all the different modalities of which we communicate. But I tweet, and immediately, it's followed. So, I didn't realize, I answered students' prayers yesterday. I mean, I was the hero, you know, on many of them, but people were holding with bated breath. I tweeted, and within four seconds, a little, one of our students said, you answered my prayers and had the praying hands, there's little pictures the whole way along with it. So, I love the number of students who are following. I love the ones who are advocating for further days off today, and I had to say, not, wake up and do your homework. But love that communication in that sense.
We were on the national news today. Did you know that?
We were, St. Mary's County?
Yes, we had a four-car collision at San Souci because of the ice.
Oh, I did not know that.
Just so you know.
Okay, well, thank you. Continuing down on that one, we're going to continue to make those decisions, you know, on the best way for safety and all of those issues, taking a lot of data points. Let me continue down through. Congratulations to Devon Augburn. Many of you know Devon, who is our president of the Student Councils for the State of Maryland. She's one of our students at Lennertown High. She was selected as one of 14 students nationwide who had a personal audience with Secretary Arnold Duncan to participate in a discussion entitled "Student Voices." So, we're very pleased about that. As you know, she is the daughter of Dean Amingo, who's one of our assistant principals as well. Continuing in the generosity and the spirit of goodness, recently, I sent a holiday letter out to our staff, and again, have encouraged them, in any way if they can, to participate in our shoe fund. Immediately when we posted on the EAC, I got word back from Rhonda Moline and others in payroll, as well as finance, that within the first several hours, we had 30 employees to make donations to the shoe fund on that particular day, who filled out the direct deposit form to have it taken from their paycheck. And I was thrilled with that, and just delighted. Leading in also, in the spirit of generosity, there's a real theme to my report today, recognizing the time of the year, is that Vicki Mail, come on up here and stand by me, if you would, please. I do want to provide, shine the light here a little bit. Vicki Mail is a coordinator of procurement, and my goodness, does she do a great job, due diligence, if you're, nothing's going to get by her in terms of procurement, making certain our processes are handled, that things go out to bid properly, administer your policies. Again, another employee that I want you to know, but why am I bringing her here today is probably a little bit embarrassing to her, but I asked and begged for her to come, is the fact that she is a very active member in ASBO, which is the Association of Business Officers in the State of Maryland. And you've been an officer on that as well, and vice president and leadership. Will you be president soon on that?
Two years.
Two years. So, you know, St. Mary's County is always represented, you know, with presidencies and officers in these organizations. That really warms my heart. But she is very lucky, you know, she wins things all the time. She went to the National Conference, correct?
In Boston.
In Boston, and won a cash prize of $250. But, okay, so that's all good, but she's very aware of our policies, that she can't accept a donation, in the sense of an employee can't accept that based upon a certain level. So, following our policy with fidelity, she in turn then got clarification. She's now donating that $250 to our shoe fund, in that sense. We are so proud of her on that sense, and want to provide that recognition with it. Vicki, just an opportunity, but the other piece is Rhonda Moline's here, one of our great people from finance overseeing this work, is Greg Norris, and an opportunity to bring all the finest people down in front of you, because we want to keep them happy up there. Because one thing that I don't like, and they know that, is every payday, if one of my employees doesn't get paid, one way to have unhappy employees is don't touch their money, in that sense. So, we got to make sure that everything's taken care of on that. Vicki, just say a few things to the board about your involvement in ASBO, and then also about your string of luck. And if you feel like you want to play the lottery and donate that, too, we'll accept that also.
Actually, I was nominated to pick up the Mega Millions today for our group. I've been a member of ASBO, Maryland DC, since 1999, when I worked for Charles County Public Schools. And I am the vice president now, and will automatically progress to president in the next two years. I really appreciate the support that I get from Greg and Rhonda, in allowing me to attend all the meetings that I have to go to, including international events. I have a leadership forum in Florida coming up in February, which ASBO pays, since I'm an executive committee member. And I get to go to the Disney Institute.
Oh, excellent.
It's a wonderful opportunity for me, and I appreciate all the support that I get from St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Well, Vicki, we're delighted you're here today. I wanted to shine the light on you, literally and figuratively in that sense, because we're very proud of your work. But also recognize, and I think Greg, you know, we should, probably in hindsight, I should have brought all the finance department down to shine the light on them as well, as we do department. And maybe we can do that the next meeting, too. Occasionally, I like to bring individuals in front of you. But does the solid work behind the scenes, not a lot of public glory in the sense, but if her work is not done to fidelity in carrying it out, you're surely going to hear about it, through the purchasing process, through the bid process, the procurement process. Very competitive, and great area, an area that can come under great scrutiny and challenges legally as well. I can tell you firsthand, and I know a lot of other people in here in this room can attest, all your Ts are always crossed, and all your Is are always dotted. So, thank you for your generosity. Thank you for your work. Rhonda, as well, back there, one of your supervisors, and Greg, for the fine work that occurs in finance every day. We thank you, and have a wonderful holiday. Very good. We already mentioned about Peter Francho's visits, you know, in that sense, and already talked about that. I had already mentioned about Don Simpson in regards to her recognition with the PEP program. I was delighted to be a guest with Captain Ben Shavchek on base with some representatives. He had a veteran from World War II, and was able to sit with the admiral, as well as the captain, and listen with the World War II veterans, some of the stories there as well. Honored to be there. On a somber note, recognizing that December 14th will be the one-year anniversary of the horrific shooting at Sandy Hook. Hard to believe, you know, when that event occurred. Recognizing that in our own areas, in terms of keeping that as a focus, as you know, we have the superintendent's Safety and Security Advisory Committee, and that group has expanded to, you know, well over 50 people, and we met this week, lots of community members in here. And feel free to attend any of those meetings, you know, with that at any time, and pop in on those. We meet several times throughout the year. But I want to just, in light of that, say, we never let up on this particular area. Safety and security is not an area that's just like an event, you know, and we check it off the list. It's every day, doing our due diligence and focusing in on what needs to be done. And I want to read a couple statistics to you real quickly, if I could, to understand the work that's being done by your school system, that we have had to date, to this to date, 16,652 volunteer criminal history background screenings completed and maintained. 16,652. 1,958 volunteers have been trained this year, and you knew that was an expectation this year that I placed on safety and security, our volunteers to be trained on the appropriate ways to conduct themselves in school with young people. Close to 2,000 for this school year alone. 12,926 individual record audits of current volunteer criminal records, and we go back and review them. We found 476 findings that have been additional that we had to review. 2,713 employee criminal history background screenings completed and maintained. 2,361 individual record audits of current employee criminal history backgrounds, meaning when employees come onboard, that we go through the background check as well. 898 school system identification badges issued. 3,000 electronic access control cards issued and maintained by staff. 303 safety cameras with supporting hardware and software installed and maintained at 17 sites. 22 electronic locking systems with supporting hardware and software installed and maintained. 1,600 perimeter checks completed by assigned safety and security assistants, and 700 safety and student-safe driving contracts were completed annually. 5,000 students participated in safety and security-sponsored student assemblies. Those are, numbers are staggering for me, in terms of the work occurring every day to keep our young people safe, doing that due diligence and never letting off. Incredible number of events, and as you can see, we've got an upcoming agenda between January and May of things that are occurring as well. So, I just wanted to do a shout-out to the safety and security arena, and everybody who keeps our young people safe, but also, in the symbolic nature of the anniversary date of the Sandy Hook shooting, that we take pause and recognize the sadness of that particular event, and that horrific event, but also know that as the school, as St. Mary's County Public Schools, we're doing everything that we can to prevent those kind of activities in our school. Jim, if you could put that picture up for the board members to see, I'm going to try to move through this quickly. Just have a picture, I want you to see these beautiful faces as I'm reading. This is the Forest Center's hospitality and tourism students. They had the opportunity to volunteer at the National Tree Lighting in Washington DC on Friday, December 6th. This was arranged through the White House Visiting Center partner, with Ms. Kathy Langley as the individual who assisted us with that. So, this is the students up in DC on that particular evening, in their vests that were provided for them as workers there to get firsthand experience. And we're very proud of them, and I wanted you to see that. To tie into what Mrs. Washington said, you know, about the students that she focused in on, next week, I will be, I've sent out an invitation to past students who've graduated from the school district, who are now attending college. And I'm trying to get individuals who are currently freshmen in college, sophomores in college, juniors in college, and seniors in college. We've invited them back for conversation with myself regarding, did we meet the mark? What did we do to prepare you? What did we, what do we need to do different? Exactly everything that Mrs. Washington just talked about. Board members, as you know, you're invited to that event, and anybody from the press would be invited as well. And I think that's a critical conversation for individuals to hear, you know, about how we are actually meeting that mark. When we talk about college and career readiness, that's a very nebulous, abstract concept for individuals. But when we actually hear from the individuals who are in college, and taking that in different segments, you know, the career individuals as well, how are they prepared? Because you know with a vengeance, what drives me, as well as all of you, is to ensure that every child is truly ready for college and careers, because we know the alternative if they aren't, and if they drop out. And with that graduation rate continuing to go up, we want to make certain we're meeting that mark. And we don't have a way yet to track young people where they go. It's sort of serendipitous to keep track of where they are by running into parents, et cetera. So, I will save my, I have a whole list of names to read for the November 2013. Work card'd be nice, but I've gone on a little longer than I expected. They will enter that into the record, continue that maybe for January, bring that for the January board meeting. But I want to end by stating where I started, which was, you know, we had the issues with the snow days, but recognize that it is the holidays upon us. I do want everybody to be safe during the holidays. Our winter break runs from December 23rd through the, through January 1st. Yes, there is school on January 2nd and 3rd. Students are expected to report, staff members expected to report, and we want people to take time with their families. Offices at schools will be closed during that time, and we want everybody to be safe on that sense. And again, we'll monitor the weather throughout the next several months, during the winter months, but we're always monitoring the weather, considering we've had more incidents recently with hurricanes and tornadoes than we have actually had with the snow-related events. So, our primary goal is to keep individuals safe. So, have a restful and happy and safe holiday, and season greetings to everybody. Thank you very much, board members, and back to you, Dr. Raspa.
Thank you very much, Dr. Marterano. There are no recognitions today, there's no public hearing today, there's no public comment. Is that correct? Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I meant to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second.
Second?
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Moving right into action items. The first action item is the 2015 Local Capital Improvements Program. Mr. Clements and Mrs. Howe. How are you today, Mrs. Howe?
Fine, how are you?
Thank you. Very well.
It's that time of year that we have transitioned from the State Capitol Improvements Program to the local Capitol Improvements Program. So, what I have before you today for action is the local Capitol Improvements Program. But I did want to give you an update on where we are with the State CIP. We've started back in July with the Educational Facilities Master Plan, which was our planning document. We moved through our State CIP approval process, and we presented that to you for your approval. We presented it to the Planning Commission, we presented it to the Board of County Commissioners for their approval, and we submitted it to the state. We had review meetings with them. We've been through some processes of submission to the Public School Construction Program, and had a review meeting with them. We then had our first round submission and review and recommendation from the PSDP. They've authorized so far, the IAC has authorized 57 percent of the 250 million authorized so far by the governor, which is around 142 million. So, our first round recommendation that we received was for 37 percent of that funding that we requested. So, out of the 13.2 million that we requested for fiscal year 15, we've received 4.9, almost $5 million. And out of that, we received 3.2 for Captain Walter Francis Duke, out of the 5.6 that we requested. Most importantly, we received planning approval for Spring Ridge Middle Schools, limited renovation, and we received 1.7 million of the construction. That gets an alignment to continue on with our request. We did request the relocatable classrooms, but due to the funding level that they had for that first round recommendation, that 57%, they were unable to meet that request. So the beginning of the month, Dr. Mariano presented our appeal to the Interagency Committee, and at this time, we're waiting, and we should hear probably in the next couple of days, that first round recommendation. Since that time, we've had a lot of dialogue back and forth, and I'm very confident that our next round recommendation that came from the appeal will be very successful and we'll continue on. We appealed for the remaining amount of all of the projects for construction on Captain Walter Francis Duke and Spring Ridge Middle School, so we should see continued funding levels coming in for those, and we should see the approval of the state relocatable. In the event that we're not successful in getting all those projects, the next step would be the appeal to the Board of Public Works in January, and we're already starting in the process of appealing for those, because we know we're not going to get everything for this round, and we're starting to prepare those documents for the appeal and for the Board of Public Works in January. We'll keep you posted as those projects continue to move forward. We're very happy and pleased at this point. I think the big portion of this is to know that we received 37% when there was only a 57% authorization was a very, very important piece for us, and to get that $5 million first round was a very good approval for us, especially the planning approval for Spring Ridge. Where that leads us to is the local CIP. We've incorporated all of the elements into our document for the state at this time. Our requirement is that by January 6th, we turn our local CIP over to the Board of County Commissioners so that they can start their process of work sessions. There's already been One Direction and Meeting in November, and we did not get any direction from the county commissioners as how to proceed at this point. Mr. Clements and Mr. Norris are having monthly meetings with the county staff, and they've started to talk about the process, and Mr. Clements is keeping them informed as the state process is moving forward as well. So what we have before you is the local CIP projects. When we start talking about these projects, we do increase them according to where we need to be in terms of those costs per square foot construction. If you look at FY 2015, we're at $10.1 million. It's 1.3 million more than we were last year. We've made adjustments according to meetings that we've had with the state on terms of the projects that are state-eligible. We've met with design and construction and maintenance staff to make sure that all the projects are aligned with where the budgets need to be for this year. And our FY 2015 projects are reflective of Captain Walter Francis Duke, Spring Ridge Limited Renovation, and the Spring Ridge relocatables being our top three state projects, followed by the Energy Efficiency LED Project, which is continuing on from last year. We're looking at the Evergreen Elementary School Primary Building. We're looking to do the educational specification for this project, and then next year, we would go in for planning approval. Continuation of the Esperanza Soil Erosion Project. The Margaret Brent Chiller replacement, which we've talked about, that needs to be replaced. That project is coming up from the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. Relocatables, the one project we did add, as we continued on through this project, we added one year to that at the end of the fiscal year 19. Continuation of the site paving and parking and sidewalk, that would be our installment for FY 15, and that would compromise our FY 15 request of 10.1 million. If you continue out, we've just adjusted our projects to increase for changes in project scope for increased dollars. If you look across, what we've really done is made some adjustments, and if you look at the complete bottom, we are $8.3 million less than our request this time last year. Projects' address capacity are in there for the second elementary school, which is Captain Walter Francis Duke. The Evergreen Elementary School comes in and meets that need, and then the fourth elementary school, the third elementary school, sorry, is in FY 20, and we have the high school in there as well. And this is very similar to where we were at the State CIP time. Next step in this process, if approved, would be to submit the project detailed sheets prior to the winter break to the county to meet the January 6th timeframe. The process will continue on as we make different changes in the State CIP projects, as detailed sheets would be adjusted, and also as we go through the work session with the county commissioners, we would come back and forth with the Board of Education and county commissioners as we adjust through the process.
Just to share with the board that $8 million, that's less than last year, has really came about by realigning the third elementary, moving it out slightly, and moving in the primary building for Evergreen, because Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary is not going to be able to take care of all the capacity needs in that California area. So we see that be in the next step, and then moving to the third elementary, which will be in the southern part of the county. So that's, it's not that our needs not there, we're just adjusting it to try to meet the need a little faster, and that, that building's considerably cheaper than the new, another new elementary, so.
The fourth elementary is still sitting out there. It's in around 2022, 2023 timeframe.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Howe. Questions or comments? Mrs. Allen?
No questions for you. I just want, again, to thank the commissioners for forward funding the limited renovation for Spring Ridge Middle School. We would not be able to move forward, nor do I think the state would support us moving forward on that most critical issue had our commissioners not stepped up to the plate. And $10 million is an extremely significant amount of money within their budget, so I'm very grateful that they were willing to do that. I think it speaks volumes about their commitment to the citizens and to this board as well.
And Ms. Allen, that's a very valid point. I mean, as if you go back and look at where our CIP request is, that $5 million from the state, if you look at that request, it's going to be a very challenging portion for the state to meet our request in full this year. What we've shared with them, and Mr. Clements and Dr. Mariano did a very good job at our CIP appeal, making that statement, is we need those funds to meet cash flow. Having the county come forward and forward fund Spring Ridge is going to assist us in doing that, but the state still has to come forward with their share. But having the forward-funded portion of Spring Ridge is going to help us meet cash flow.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Washington?
I also want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for putting forth the $10 million for Spring Ridge Middle School. They always say they have money in reserve for a rainy day, and that was a rainy day for the county. Not only was it a rainy day, it was a fiery day when the school caught on fire. So I'm glad they were fiscally conservative and had that money there for us to move forward. Without that money, that local capital improvement list would not look like it's looking today.
Exactly.
So I appreciate what they have done for the school system, our students, and the citizens of St. Mary's County.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington.
Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you very much. I think we also need to point out that we're an awful lucky county, that we're growing the way we are.
Yes.
I've seen other counties in the state that aren't half as lucky as we are, and great job, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
Again, I'm going to thank the county commissioners, and now we have to, as you said, work on the $5 million from the state, and I think we could probably lobby, I know how to do that.
Dr. Mariano and Mr. Clements did an amazing job, I'm hearing from, what I'm hearing from the state on our appeal, and hopefully we'll be very successful in the next couple of days on that next round.
Good. Can't wait to hear about it. Thank you very much for all the hard work you do on this.
Peter?
I want to say thank you. As we know, St. Mary's County is one of the biggest expanding counties in the state of Maryland, and this is how we accommodate for that, and there has to be, there are needs that have to be met, this is the best way. So, thank you and the county commissioners.
Dr. Mariano, you want to?
No, I mean, I appreciate your compliments and comments. We have a very solid planning process. Kim, back to you, and to Larry and to Brad for the solid work. They do a lot of behind-the-scenes work to prepare for it, and we went up with a high level of confidence in our advocacy. It's moving forward, and I'm expecting, you know, great things for these, all of the projects we advance to be funded. I lead this into the next month, it's a critical meeting, the Board of Public Works, one of the representatives, Mr. Peter Francho is at one of the votes of the triumvirate, being the governor and the treasurer, Nancy Kopp. They make the decision for the final bit of that money that will come forward. I am going to make certain we invite our commissioners, all the Board of Education members, and the delegation to be present, because the community effort with the $10 million is critical. I think that the point that people don't understand is the cash flow piece of that, the ability to move this forward over the course of several years, and how money is distributed very judiciously at the state level does not account for that, would not account for that $10 million. So, we've all said that in a variety of ways, but we just got to keep pressing that point. The community wants things to happen very quickly, and we really want it as well. And I know Angela Fulpus here, the principal of the school, and we'll have some more conversation about that momentarily. But I was pleased with the process, I was pleased with the meeting. Their level of questions indicated that they were very pleased with our presentation, and we'll move it forward to the Board of Public Works, so the process continues.
And I think that the, that's very important, is Dr. Lever is very aware of our cash flow needs and understands the project, and having that advocacy at that level is very important to our process as well.
All right, board members, we need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the FY 2015, FY 2020 Local Capital Improvements Program for submission to the Board of County Commissioners for St. Mary's County for their consideration during the upcoming budget cycle.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next action item is the limited renovation and addition at Spring Ridge Middle School. Mr. Clements and Mr. Hallwood.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to transition here between the capital plan, where Kim, as you see, works hard to get the money, and Larry to spend it. And, and to recognize the Spring Ridge project, this has just been over six months since the fire, and the amount of work that the school and Larry's staff has done with the architect to make this project possible today. The design development and construction documents will be presented to you together. Larry has talked with the DGS, and they'll accept that submission, that'll help the timeline. And we hope by early spring to be under construction, at least ordering the components we need for this summer, which is quite a task. If you remember the Leonardtown High School, Middle School project, what had to happen that first year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Larry, our components with us, and the principal, Angela Fulpus. Now, I'll ask Angela if she wants to move up front here with us, she can help take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Good morning, board members. This really is a milestone for us. As Mr. Clements said, it's only been six months since we approved the educational specification, and to be in this position is remarkable. The design team has done a really wonderful job. We've had a number of design, all-day design meetings at Spring Ridge Middle School, so we could take advantage of having the staff there, so they've remained participants in this process. We've also presented this design to the PTA and the larger community. And also, I'd like to pay gratitude to the Department of General Services for allowing us to do this combined DD/CD process, which is very rare for systemic renovations of this scale.
Tell us what those mean.
But that did buy us several months in the process.
Mr. Hallwood, you just said DD and?
Design development and the construction documents are being submitted simultaneously. The advantage is that we have the Leonardtown Middle School experience, so they are very aware of this project, and I think that's why they're supportive of this combined submission. The design has progressed in accordance with the schematic design that you approved in August. No major floor plan changes. As I mentioned, the staff has been very much a part of the further development of the project. The limited renovation addresses replacement of a number of major building systems. Those include the heating and cooling system, the lighting system throughout the building, security system, data system. This project is, also involves the replacement of the roof, which is very important. And also extremely critical is the upgrade to the fire protection system, the replace of the fire alarm system completely, and installation of fire protection wet sprinklers. And I'll say, during this, during this process from schematic design, we sat down with representatives from the Bay District Fire Department, and they thoroughly reviewed what they would like to see in terms of connections and the way we organize the fire protection system for their response, if it's ever needed. There's a number of architectural enhancements in this project, a small addition of about 5,000 square feet that will allow us to move STEM 6 from the relocatable into the building. The floor plan of the building being reorganized, so all classrooms have a dedicated entrance off of public corridor, so the last vestiges of what we call the pod system will be eliminated by this project. We'll also have new lockers as part of this project, and a redesign of the media center. We, as part of this process, we're doing an independent cost estimate. We believe the project, the base project is well within our project budget for construction, and accordingly, we've added a number of ad alternates to the project. We have an add, we have 10 ad alternates in total. One is providing a new canopy to the front entrance to get some architectural character and presence to the building. We're reorganizing and redoing the courtyard and adding a gazebo that will make that space both more aesthetically pleasing, but also more usable in terms of an outdoor classroom space. We're also under this project doing a more, a potentially more extensive renovation of the physical education locker room to make those more efficient. We would like to add a new electronic sign as part of this project, and that will be an ad alternate. One of the, one of the lessons learned, I think a bit from Leonardtown Middle School, is that the mechanical equipment, which will be on top of the roof, is very large, and so we've added an ad alternate to provide some screening of that. And of course, being able to redo the roof adds our ability to do that effectively and economically. We hope to, as part of the canopy addition, also take the flagpoles out of the bus loop and move that to the face of the building, add a few more spaces there for the buses. Lightning protection would be an ad alternate. We're also looking, and this is in response to the state requirement, we're looking at the potential of adding 25 KW solar photovoltaics to this project. And again, us doing the roof allows us to do that more, much more effectively. An ad alternate will be in the project to have the installation of the modular classrooms, the state units, as part of that, so we know what that cost is and can hopefully coordinate that in the, in the construction contract. And then finally, we're looking at replacing all of the fluorescent fixtures within the interior of the building, which are part of the base bed, with new LED lights. LED interior lights have really dropped in price. We really want to see what that, that cost is and see if we can afford that, because that's energy saving, and probably more importantly, is labor savings over time. So those are our 10 ad alternates in this project. We are pursuing a multi-step competitive bid, as we did with Captain Walter Francis Duke, where we solicit general contractors to submit their qualifications. That process is underway. The pre-qualification packages are due this Friday. We've had about eight firms request the pre-qualification package, so we're pleased by that response. So we hope to bring back to you the approval of the pre-qualified contractors at your first board meeting in January. So in terms of the overall schedule, your approval today will allow to submit this combined DD/CD package to the state. DD/CD package to the state. It will take about a month for them to make their technical review of the documents, provide comments back to us. We hope to integrate those comments by the end of January and then move to bidding this project in February, hopefully bring it to the board for their approval in March, and then, of course, the state will have to approve it as well. So that's our timeline. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Komponis to, to refresh your memory on the project.
Hello, board.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me here and getting you updated with the scope of the project and the progress here. As Larry said, we are pushing our construction document submission for the end of next week and we are in good shape for that. But to give you an idea, just a little more of the, how we've developed the design over the last few months, as Larry said, nothing really has changed dramatically in the, in the overall plan. We've just developed some finish items and, and really got into detailing the, the whole floor plan itself and the envelope of the building. Just to start off with, it is going to be a phased project and as we start construction, the first phase is going to incorporate the boiler room, the kitchen and cafeteria, the administration area and the fine arts area, particularly the music area up front here. You can see at this area here, that's the addition, 5,000 square foot addition, that'll start as well. There's no necessarily, necessary timetable for that to get done, only that it has to get done as soon as possible. But basically, that would be the art rooms and an additional classroom. So, once we start construction in April, a lot of the preliminary things are going to happen with the contractor getting on board, doing submittals and processes like that, and actually start opening up the ceiling throughout the corridors during the school year. This will happen in the evenings, but it'll be, there'll still be a safe environment for the students. They'll start replacing piping, removing and replacing piping for the new systems. And then, once the summer starts, then they'll really get into demolition and modifications in this area. And they have to be done by the end of summer, so these areas are up and going for the students in the fall of 14 school year. At that point, they will move into Phase 2, and we have subsets of Phase 2, first, second, third, and fourth phase, A, B, C, and D. And ideally, we'd like to get all these done during the school year, the 2014, 15 school year, but they can basically probably move into, bleed into the summer of 15 to get the last phase done. But basically, these are all very similar phases, and in these phases, we'll be modifying all the classrooms. As Larry said, each, each classroom would have a, its own individual entrance and, and isolated acoustically and from every other classroom. Each pod will have a nice new science lab, and we've learned a little bit from Leonard Town Middle School, and we've kind of opened them up a little bit more to make them more flexible with the student and teaching areas. But each of these pods will have nine, or, yeah, nine classrooms, two of which are the science labs. When we go around through the Phase 2 subsets of phasing, Phase 2B and 2C, both have a, a science lab, but since they don't need them right now, we're going to design them with the infrastructure for the science utilities, but not build, build out all the casework. So in the future, down the line, if that ever needs to happen, they can just come in and, and put some casework in and create a new science lab. So, basically, these four subsets of 2, Phase 2 will be done by the summer of 15, at which time we'll move into the lock, the gym lockers, the physical education area, and the courtyard, media center area, and faculty nursing, nurses' suite area, at which point we will modify everything to give, bring them up to state code, which obviously has been already approved. So, we're going to be modifying the, the media center, giving them a new office and accessible, ADA accessible circulation desk. We'll have a flexible classroom towards the back of the media center for additional computer labs or any type of class that's, that's required by the school. We'll also have two instructional areas in the, in the media center, which will have smart boards as well, and, and then we'll have our stacking systems and seating and reading areas, as well as our IRT storage and work areas as well. Off of the media center, we're going to pop out a little glass storefront with a canopy that'll go into the, the courtyard. And as Larry said, we will be modifying the courtyard, not only for the rest of the school, but for functions and operations for the STEM classrooms. In particular, we'll have individual planting areas, we'll have rain harvesting barrels that will collect water from the gazebo roof and this little canopy roof. This, this rain barrel will feed water to our memorial garden. These rain barrels will feed water to our, our planting areas. We'll, we'll have a space for a greenhouse as well. And, you know, we'll have some, we're going to keep the large trees in the, in the space as well, have paving for the gazebo for the outdoor teaching, and then we're proposing oyster shells in between all of these little planting areas. So it's, it's pervious yet a solid surface for the students to, to work around. Moving, again, in the front area, we're going to be modifying the nurses' station, so they'll have exam office and treatment areas and resting areas. We'll have our in-school suspension and security offices in this area, as well as the faculty lounge. Working also just around these pod areas, they will have offices for the guidance counselors and assistant principals, as well as our special education program. We'll have, well, we have sale classroom here, but we'll have some breakout classrooms here, here, and here for special ed classrooms, which will also be outfitted with smart boards and for smaller type classes. And we also have a, a fourth breakout special ed classroom situated in this area up front here. As again, part of that front area, we're going to redo the lobby, give a nice logo of the new Spring Ridge Harrier logo on the floor. And again, the, the canopy is an add alternate that hopefully can get budgeted into the project. Moving to the locker area, we do, will modify the locker area in the base bid to give accessible toilet rooms and new lockers in the boys' and girls' locker rooms. But as the add alternate, we're going to modify the shower system that obviously doesn't get used with individual showers that hopefully can be used more, more often. It'll also provide a, a larger outdoor storage space, so that's one of the charges we've been looking at, is getting us more storage space throughout the building. The, the kitchen in the first phase, we're going to have a new serving area, a new opening into the serving area with open grills that'll be more effective during the lunch hours. And in the, back to Phase 1 again, besides the, the finishes in the band and chorus classrooms, we're bringing the, the strings classroom in here between the, between the chorus and band classroom. Strings are over here now in a small little space, so we're going to bring them, so they're all contiguous, fine arts area. Finally, the, the last phase is that STEM area. STEM 8, 7, STEM 8 and 7 are over here now, we're going to modify them and bring, with STEM 6, which is out in a trailer here, we're going to bring them in now, so they're all contiguous, sharing some storage. They'll all have their instructional area, lab area, and a computer area, so they're going to be more functional for the, the three areas. And again, back to the, the art classrooms on the front of the school, nice large art rooms with a lot of natural light incorporated, a lot of storage room, and a new kiln space for them as well. They're also going to share an outdoor space with STEM 6 that they can do art projects and STEM projects in this area out front here. Again, we will be modifying and upgrading all the toilet facilities throughout the building for accessibility and new finishes. So, finally, as Larry said, the, the new front area is part of the out, alternate. We will be moving the flagpoles to the front here. And another component to the exterior is modifying or updating the metal panels and the cornice system around the, the building to bring, basically bring it to one cohesive architectural design program. Again, another part of the project, a critical part, is the fire suppression system. We're building a, a tank that's actually going to be horizontally laid with a retaining wall or a screen wall around it, and our fire pump room will be out here, so basically it'll be concealed back there between the school and the fields over here. And again, the, during the construction period, we are adding portable facility, portable classroom facilities, and a toilet facility out there for temporary service, which will be accessed from these back doors of the school. The renderings, I probably, you've seen these before, but we've updated the colors, bringing them more in tune with the school colors, the blue, the gray, and the, the brick color we're going to tie in with the addition, so the brick will match the existing. We'll introduce some ground face block in some of the, on the addition, as well as on the little bump outs where, at the science labs around the building. Incorporate that blue color in the canopy, and you can see up here how we're incorporating the, the mechanical screens to conceal the mechanical units, although the, the additional will incorporate that mechanical screen in the base bid. But these up here will be as part of the alternate. And again, the, the canopy is taking effect, some elements from the Great Mills entrance canopy and incorporating a new, a new element with this integral canopy into a canopy. So, the actual canopy will have a little skylight going down the, the spine of the, the canopy to bring more natural light underneath that space. Again, here's that outdoor space between the art room and the STEM 6, and you can see these are the little elements of, of the updated cornice and metal panels around the And again, here's the, the flagpoles out front, along with some sitting benches, masonry sitting benches for students as they wait for rides and buses. So, that's pretty much the scope of the work. I could probably talk all day about it, but.
I think so.
You can see, actually, on the addition, this is the north side of one of our art classroom, which has plenty of glazing, and then the other classroom has this incorporated clear story glazing and this vertical piece of glass as well. And then we'll have an, obviously, a new sign right on the front of the school there as well. Any, any questions, any particular questions?
When will STEM 6 be completed?
That's, that's the last phase, so basically, the, the last phase is summer, the fall of 15. So the, the project will be done essentially December 20th, December 31st, 2015, and that last fall school year is when that will occur. So that, that's that area right here.
And are there sprink, is there a sprinkler system?
Absolutely. And that, and that, the first phase, we're going to be doing the, the tank and the fire pump room, and at the end of each phase, that, that particular area will, will be charged with a sprinkler system and fire alarm, et cetera. So, at, so at the end of each of these individual phases, that'll be just added on to.
That's very, very good, because when I substituted there years and years and years ago, a couple of young ladies caught the school on fire and the fire department was on the roof, and I said, "Oh, goodbye, career," but as you see, I'm still here.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, unfortunately, with the fire back in the, in the spring, it shared a lot of the stuff in the school, you know, a lot of the furniture and things and the equipment burned, but the school's built, it's a 2B construction where it's, it's non-combustible. So the school itself will stay, in fact, the roof was in good shape, but the stuff that, inside was, was what caught on fire. Now with a sprinkler system, that's going to cut all that out, really. And then, as Larry said, we did meet with the local fire department to get what they needed to, to set up the building with stand pipes spread throughout. We got three locations for a stand pipe in the school, so they can bring a fire hose in the school, hook it up there and fight the fire. And really, the sprinkler system's going to cut down the fire overall, but when they come in, it's, it's the little areas in the back that they're going to go in and, and take care of, that, that, that these little things will help out. And we'll also have a, a stand pipe out on the front of the building as well.
Thank you so much for your information.
Questions, comments? Mrs. Allen?
I, I'm really pleased that we've been able to use the lessons learned from Leonard Town Middle School, especially in the way the building and the classrooms are utilized. I think that's gone a long way in informing your decisions and the designs that you've put forward. It's really exciting to be able to basically have a phoenix rise from the ashes that, certainly figuratively, but that this was our last pod school, is our last pod school. And to be able to take care of that now, I think will pay great benefits for the students who are there and who will come after them. The, the only, I guess, question I had for you, you were talking about the locker rooms in the showers. And you, the, the design you showed, there were two partitions, it appeared. I just wondered, does that mean they're just going to be three shower stalls, or will there be additional? And, and I guess to Mrs. Fulp, I, I'm not sure, you know, middle school age, I'm, I'm not sure that, I didn't think they were. It just struck me that, you know, trying to get 30 kids through three showers in a timely fashion is not going to happen, but.
It's part of the emergency plan at the school, she's in the building.
Excellent. That helps me to understand better.
Good question.
Very good. Thank you very much.
We did have a very beneficial collaborative effort with Ms. Fulp and her whole staff and faculty in coming up with a lot of these ideas here, so I think everybody's going to benefit from it.
And Mrs. Fulp has spoken various times about the fact that, that the staff have been very involved with that, and I'm, I'm happy because it's important that they are comfortable in the way this building is being utilized, but it's important for us to know that the concerns and thoughts of the staff are being considered as this moves forward. So thank you very much.
Mrs. Washington?
I could talk about this project all day. I am so happy to see Spring Ridge renovated, and I'm sorry that it had to take a fire to push it to the top, but I'm also grateful that the county commissioners had the money to do it forward. And again, I want to thank Mrs. Fulp for doing an extraordinary job. Several of the board members went to visit the school after the fire, and she was there in jeans and tennis shoes. She was running all over the place. She had a plan and an excellent plan to get the school going so that the students were being a safe, orderly, and learning environment. I want to thank Mr. Clements for all that he did and his whole staff. Superintendent for being there. Superintendent for being there every day and everybody. And I don't wanna miss anybody who was there to make...
Collaborative, yes.
It was a collaborative effort. And also, I like the idea that you had tours to Lenertown Middle School, where the teachers, the community, and the staff could see Spring Ridge, and they could make modification and make Spring Ridge their school with their own unique qualities. And also, as Mrs. Allen said, I see she read my mind, about the lessons learned at Lenertown Middle that you could incorporate at Spring Ridge Middle School. So the good news is the pod system is gone. Our controller, Peter Francho, was here when we visited Lenertown Middle School. And we told him that the pod system is gone at Lenertown Middle. He'll be pleased to hear that the same thing is happening. And the good news is there will be no pod classes in St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Exactly, farewell to Greg Brady.
Yes.
Anybody who got that generational reference, are you laughing right now?
And also, we have equity among all our middle schools.
Exactly.
So that is good news. And we have the board members, we have to be cognizant of that fact to make sure there's equity among our schools. So let's see. I like the energy efficient methods, the LED lights. So you've been effective and efficient with our resources. We're incorporating that. The new canopy will add, make it more aesthetically pleasing when people drive by the school and see it. And also, the mechanical screen is a welcome addition. Because I look at, Lenertown Middle is beautiful, but they don't have the screens. I look at Green Holly School, they don't have a screen. The schools are beautiful, but, you know, you see that. So that's a welcome addition, one of the lessons learned. Also, Mr. Clements has already done wonderful things at Spring Ridge, with the exterior landscaping, also the brush that was in front of the school. Now you can see the school clearly. And I know even better things will be done once the school is completed, because we will want the citizens to see our multimillion dollar renovation, to see that their taxpayer money has gone to good use. The solar panels are good. Let's see, you said, oh, what is the memorial garden?
There's a tree in our courtyard currently to represent Marie Jo Brown, that worked at our school for a long time. And we also have the tree in front in honor of Chad Malone, who was a young man who went to the middle school and died in a plane accident. And so we'd like to incorporate that into our courtyard.
Okay. And the basketball court, will something be done to upgrade the basketball court? Because some citizens were, somebody took an aerial view, I think they gold it.
Yeah, I mean, in the course of all these projects, we're gonna have a sizable construction contingency, and we hope to be able to utilize that with the management of the project. Right now, the basketball courts will possibly be used as a staging area. So part of that staging, in order to restore it, those basketball courts will be repaid.
Wonderful, the citizens would love to hear that. Everything's wonderful. You included so many of the board goals, safe and orderly environment. This is all gonna help with student achievement, partnerships, working with the fire department and the citizens to make a great school that all input was welcome. You did a wonderful job, thank you so much.
Mr. Matthews?
Great job, great Christmas present, thank you. I'm really impressed that we're clicking and we're picking up those 10 add alternates. It sounds like we're moving forward on all of those?
Ms. Howe and Mr. Clements have done a terrific job in building that budget. And I am very optimistic that we will be able to take the majority of those alternates, but we'll wait to see what the prices are.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mrs. Crosby, you've already had some questions, comments?
Well, the other comment I wanna make is, well, my granddaughter's gonna be there. That's, you know, so there're gonna be all lots and lots of granddaughters there, and grandsons and children there. But I do have another, it is a particular interest. And you did a wonderful job. And especially, I've substituted in there. And matter of fact, I spent a whole marking period there for a teacher when I wanted to learn a little bit more about special ed. And I really am so happy with you taking the pods, getting rid of them. The first time I saw the pods, and I was a senior at the University of Maryland, I thought, who in the world came up with this idea? The problem was, they picked kids that couldn't even, well, yeah, they were geniuses. They whispered. Well, that was great for kids that whisper, but most kids don't whisper. So to get rid of those is the best thing you've done. And you've done Lenertown, now you've done this, and like Mrs. Allen, I believe, said, that's it. Thank you, you have done a wonderful job. Where's the swimming pool? I'm kidding, you know I'm kidding.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby, Peter?
I just wanna say thank you. From a student's viewpoint, when we have our schools remodeled, and we see all the nice changes, and we hear about the things that are gonna be going on, it really does, it's really nice to hear about. And when the changes do occur and they come back, I believe it'd be, thank you. I believe it'd be in two years, when the incoming students come in and the returning students come back. It creates just a great environment for us to learn and just prosper in that school. And it is honestly, as students, we really do view the renovations as something that we really look forward to as we see the progress. I remember going to Lenertown Middle School myself and seeing the tiles on the ceiling being done, and after, throughout the year, different renovations occurring, and everyone wondering, you know, what's going on. But it really is great, thanks, appreciate it.
It's a learning experience, too. We see what's in the...
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Peter. Mrs. Fulp, would you like to make some comments? It'd be interesting to hear how the community is, you know, what the community is saying about this great project.
Well, like Mr. Hartwick shared, we're very excited. We've shared some of the design layouts with our PTSA, and we had them at our open house. So we're making sure we're getting that word out, and we're very excited about the designs. And the teachers had a lot of input into how they want their instructional spaces to look and what they needed in their instructional spaces. And they've been very accommodated in hearing that from the teachers and incorporating that into our design. We're very excited. We have a wonderful school right now, but we're looking forward to all the renovations as well to make it even better.
Well, thank you very much. It's a beautiful project, a long time coming. Everybody's very, very pleased and happy that we've gotten to this point. And it will happen.
That's right, it's moving along.
Absolutely. And everybody's looking forward to the completion of it. And Dr. Mariano, open house?
Absolutely.
Has to be planned.
Absolutely.
And so everybody could come and visit.
That's right.
All right, board members, there's an action item, we need a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the combined design, development, and construction documents for the limited renovation and addition project at Spring Ridge Middle School, as presented by staff for submission to the public school construction program.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very, very much. The next action item is the contract award for Phase One of the Energy Efficiency Initiative's report. Mr. Clements and Mr. Hawley?
Good morning, once again. I wanna start on here. These projects was an initiative last year. That's part of school construction funding, it's part of grant money, and it's part of rebate money. And Mrs. Howe, she's still here, very important part of this. Each, we submitted all of our schools except two, that was Mechanicsville and Oakville, for these projects. And these projects were to replace all of the exterior lighting with LED lighting. It would've been nice to had it as one big project, easier to manage, both construction wise, but also in getting the funding. But they weren't, they're individual projects. And to build the budget, there had to be a termination on the fixtures and things, determine the rebate, and then request the funding. Mr. Hartwick has now got bid prices, you'll see some of them here in a moment. The good news is, the prices are lower. The part of that that's confusing is that the, it's based on the fixtures, and now we have to go back and get our rebates confirmed on what that is. And Mrs. Howe's in the process of that. So we'll be doing that. The key component there is, and I've had the discussion with Mrs. Kramer at the county, is in our CIP, you saw that red number up there, possibly of 244,000, that they're gonna be deducting from our 15 funding, because that was our rebate money. So now, the rebate money may be down, but so is our spending. So as long as we can balance between the rebate and what the money is, the 244, we're still within the parameters, and they're aware of that. So things should go well there. So today, we have the first phase of these projects. Mr. Hartwick will go through with you. And then we'll have the balance in about a month or so of those schools. So Larry, with that?
Board members, because of the complexity of this project, I mean, there are 21 projects in total for these energy efficiency funding, of which we received $1.3 million in FY14. We decided to best kind of break the projects into phases. So we lumped together six of the schools, all three high schools, Lenertown Middle School, the Forest Center, and Lenertown Elementary School as our first phase. One is to make sure we really understood the technical issues from the contractor's perspective before we bid out the second phase, which is 15 schools. Again, kind of get some lessons learned, if there are things to learn. And we did learn something on this project. One of these specified light fixtures turns out to be somewhat difficult to get in terms of time. It was, it's not readily available. So we substituted that fixture during the course of the bidding of this project by addendum, and of course, that will be integrated into Phase Two with the 15 additional schools. And that Phase Two, I'll tell you, is currently under design, and we hope to finish that design by the end of December. It also allowed us to confirm the pricing on this project to make sure that we had sufficient budget, so that we didn't over-design and could do what we set out to do. And as you will see by the numbers I'll show you in a minute, we were significantly under our budget. The other good news about that is that we actually requested 23 schools, but only 21 were funded. Dinerd and White Marsh were approved project, but they didn't get funded. Well, hopefully, through the savings that we're getting in Phase One and Phase Two, we will be requesting that we add those two projects, so that all of our schools will have the new, more efficient LED light fixtures. So we, the plans and specifications for this project was done by complete commissioning, which has a design component. We advertised this bid through eMaryland Marketplace on October 2nd of this year. We had 15 contractors purchase the plans and specifications. And out of those 15, 10 contractors submitted bids. And you can see, we've listed the bidders here, there are the 10 bidders. There was quite a range here, but the two closest bidders were very close, less than $10,000. Difference between those two contractors, those two contractors are very similar in size and experience. And then there was quite a range beyond that. The lowest bid was submitted by Zapata Enterprises, which is based in White Plains, so they're close by. They, we've checked out their surety, the surety is rated A by A M Best. And they submitted all the required documents. Zapata Enterprises is well-known to us. They've served on a number of projects as subcontractors. In fact, they did the LED lighting retrofit at Mechanicsville Elementary School. And that was a big benefit, I think, for them in that the same light fixtures that we're using for these projects, we used at Mechanicsville. So they've got some experience there that some of the other bidders probably don't have. So we've listed all the individual projects that comprise that low bid of 387,000. You see, there's quite a range here. Lenertown Middle School, just to explain why that number is so much lower, is because we're only changing out the parking lot lights, because we changed out a lot, so that's why that number is lower. So it's a 387,000. That compares to what our Phase One project budget was, was approximately $450,000 for construction. We set aside a construction contingency of 23,000 going into this phase. We figured about $70,000 for design and construction administration, bringing that total to about $543,000. What we're proposing today was this award of $387,000. We would ask your permission and authorization for a construction contingency of $23,000 for this Phase One. Our design and construction administrations are considerably less. I think using a complete commissioning, we really realized some savings there. And so the total project for that Phase One is just over $436,000, about $106,000 less than we budgeted. So again, we would like to go back to the state with the contract award document to ask that Dinerd and White Marsh be added to these projects as part of those savings. And then we provided you the Phase Two budget that completes the $1.3 million funding for this project. So with that being said, we find Zapata Enterprises to be a responsible and responsive bidder, and ask for your approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hartwick, questions and comments?
Just a real quick question, Dr. Ash, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Just emphasize again, when the project start date is on these? If you could.
We do have a couple more steps. We do need to go to the state for their contract approval, because combined are over $100,000. And we will have to get Smecco's confirmation of the rebate. But we hope all of that, we can wrap up by, in January, and start that project, and probably take three to four months to complete that project, that phase. Again, simultaneously, we will be bidding, we're finishing the design of the Phase Two, and hope to put that out to bid in January. And then basically award March, April, and then have that, all the schools done by December of 2014.
Okay, good, thank you. Peter?
No, no comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby?
Well, whenever we can save money, what can I say? That's wonderful, you've done a really good job of analyzing the entire situation in the company, and I thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews?
Good job, you answered all my questions. I was curious why there was such a large range, but with Zapata having history and knowing the equipment, that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, some of those contractors are general contractors, so there's an overhead there. And then I think what I neglected to say is that Zapata owns a lot of their own equipment that others would have to rent, so there's a savings there. And the scale really works well for Zapata. One other comment about Zapata, they are a certified MBE firm. Because it was a single trade contract, we really didn't believe that we could segment it effectively for MBE subcontracting participation. But having them as a prime MBE will count toward our total MBE utilization. So that's also very good news for us.
Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
This takes me back, 'cause time and innovation changes things. I remember when this board was talking about the high cost of having on the parking lights, lights on, and exterior lights on around all our schools and buildings, because we have a lot of schools and a lot of buildings, and the high cost of that. And this board was saying, well, we definitely need lights on for safety. It prevents vandalism. And this board was saying, well, we definitely need lights on for safety, it prevents vandalism, it prevents our schools being crime-ridden and all kind of illegal activity going on. So now we have LED lights, which are more energy efficient, and now we can provide safety and security for our students, staff, community, to use the school after hours and in the dark, and even when nobody's in the building, anybody driving by, the police or citizens, if they see something going on, all they have to do is just call 911. So our schools are well-lit and protected, our buildings and our people. So thank you for doing this, and the cost savings is well worth it.
Mrs. L.
I think the majority of my questions were answered either by you or when the superintendent asked about when this would start. Any sense of the kinds of savings you expect us to be able to achieve over the long term? I know we'll receive rebates, but and I I know that.
Ms. Howe did a wonderful job in setting this project up, and that was part of their analysis for some of those rebates. And in total, we should be saving about, what, a million kilowatt-hours a year, which is equivalent to about $100,000 a year. And that's just on that's just on energy savings. Now realize that with LED light fixtures, these light fixtures have a much longer lifespan to them. They will go 10, 15 years before they need changing. So every couple of years now, where we have to put people from the maintenance department and bucket truck trucks to change out those light fixtures, we're not going to have to do that, so really a tremendous savings.
And I I know we're able to do this on our schools, and that's of primary importance, but school buildings are not the only buildings we have, and I'm wondering if, you know, for instance, here, some of the other places that the Bethune and such, is there value in at some point looking at what we can do in some of our other areas to to achieve some savings in a similar fashion?
The other thing that we are going to save with this project is, some of the poles that we have, some of the light poles we have at our schools are actually Smecco lights, and we'll be replacing those, so we'll be losing the the costs that we pay Smecco to operate those lights. So there's a lot of savings that we're going to experience with this project. The project that we had with the state was for schools, and we weren't able to do offices with this, or we would have done that by all means. One of the things we've been doing, we will be getting rebates on this project that are being funneled back into this particular project, as part of it, they'll be going back to the county. But in other projects, we've been doing rebates, such as our demand response program in the summer, and that generates around $100,000. $50,000 of that goes right back towards reducing our utility bills. The other $50,000 of that, we have been collecting, so that is something we could utilize, those type of rebates, to come back and do office complexes. So we do have a very active energy conservation program that is generating some funds that can be reinvested into other projects, so that would be something that we could consider doing in the future. We've been looking to identify those as projects that would would assist us in those aspects.
And I would love to see us, you know, if there if there are not other competing priorities that would that rise above that, I would love to see us work in that direction to try to make some other changes. Thank you.
But this this opportunity, it was really truly a joint effort to really identify the most, a project that had a large scale across all schools, that had an impact, it did address safety and security issues, had a large volume reduction on our energy conservation, and really did have an impact on our utility budget. So it really was a large scale. One of the things we talked about in developing this, and I know it caused Mr. Hardwick some challenges on the budget on this side and caused these adjustments, was the the scale of economy that we were going to see on the budget. That was something that was very hard to predict at the time we were developing the budget, and as a result of the bidding, we were able to see that large-scale economy, and I think that had something to do with some of the bid results you saw as well, was that economy of scale.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Excellent, it's a well-planned project, thank you very much.
Board members, action items, we need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education award the contract for the Phase One Energy Efficiency Initiatives to Zapata Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $387,000. The Board of Education further authorizes a construction contingency of $23,000. Execution of the contract is contingent on state review and approval and verification of utility rebates. Thank you.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Hardwick, thank you very, very much. At this time, the board will take a short break. (applause)
(inaudible)
Come on.
(inaudible)
Board will reconvene at this time, we'll continue with the information items. The first information item is the CareFirst healthcare overview, and Mrs. Layman, you're not Mrs. Layman.
Not yet.[959.32][959.32](laughter)
Oh, there you are.[961.63][961.63](laughter)
Could I just take one minute to introduce them, if you would?
Mr. Norris, please, go right ahead.
Yes, today we have our healthcare administrators for CareFirst that handles our health program. We have Tricia Layman, and we have Donna Hazy. I've been calling her Hoz for 20 years, it's not right. But they were last year, about three years ago, to kind of go over healthcare, and we thought with everything that's going on with the National Healthcare Program, and what we've done this past year when we had the triple option plan come into play, so that you can kind of get a flavor for where we're going. You also know that the legislative auditors are coming in on January 13th, and one of the things they've been focusing on in all the other counties is the healthcare program. And so we think we're in a good place, and we thought this would be a good time just to give you a general overview, she has some slides, and we'll answer any questions you have, so. Tricia?
It's yours.
Thank you very much. I'm much shorter than he is.[1018.38][1018.38](laughter) I welcome the opportunity to meet with you today. My name is Tricia Layman, I'm a senior account manager with CareFirst, and have had the pleasure to be with the organization for 39 years, long before it was CareFirst, it was back in the days of just Blue Cross and Blue Shield. But anyway, I wanted to share with you today some some, I'm calling it a State of the Union message, because I think it's important that you see where you are in relationship to your decisions that are being made from the standpoint of plan, design, and financing. Understanding that you are a self-insured group, which means you're paying your claims, you're paying your way as you go, it is very important for us to show you that we're good stewards of your money, and that we are what we are bringing to the table that's helping you save money. So as I go through these, please don't hesitate to stop me if you have any questions. Just to let you know what I'm going to be addressing, demographics, I want you to see your enrollment, how your enrollment has grown, performance in paid care measures, 13 over 12. I want you to understand what St. Mary's County Public Schools has done to help the process, what CareFirst has done and brought to the table, and then I'm going to touch base on Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, which is what Greg asked me to kind of put into a very elementary level, and I can tell you, it is a moving target all the time, so I will be glad to to tell you what I know and the impacts to you as an account. And then I'd be glad to answer any questions. I also want to point out to you that I have my card that was with all the presentations, so I welcome any opportunity that you would want to call me directly if you have specific questions after today. So here we go. 2012, we looked at November through October, year over year, because that's the most current information, and your enrollment has grown by 172 employees and retirees. Now, when we talk about employees and retirees, we're talking about contracts. When we talk about members, we're talking about all the dependents included with that. So it's 172 contracts, and it's 258 members growth year over year. I think that's important to note, because as you increase in size, you would expect your claim dollars to increase, unless you don't give these people Blue Cross cards when they come in the door. They're going to have claims, and those claims have to be factored in. Growth of group is a huge component to growth in expense. Male, female, no surprise to you that your your female content is is higher than the male, that's average, that's what we see mostly in Board of Educations, and the subscriber age is another driving factor. Subscriber is your employee or your retiree. Member is including the dependents again, so you will see that year over year, the age of the subscriber is increasing, and the age of the member is increasing, but as you have more babies, that that number will come down. But it's very important to see that the age is growing. I find this to be very common in municipal business. I concentrate in the municipal world with CareFirst and have for a number of years, and what we find is that you have wonderfully loyal, stable employees that stay with you. The good news is, you have wonderful employees that stay with you.
Right.
They are aging with you too, so that's not uncommon for us to see. The next measure we wanted to look at is what we call claims expense, and I broke it down by medical, prescription drug, dental, and vision, because those are the components you have with us. Underneath that, I've given what's called an average PMPM, that means per member per month. For your medical plan, you will see that 13 over 12, your PMPM has actually come down, even with the growth of new employees. It has also come down in the prescription drug, from 14622 to 14562. The dental has come down, and the vision has come down. So I think that is showing that your trends are working well. You always have to remember that there is something that's called the underwriting curve, and the underwriting curve says it doesn't always go well. You're going to have shock claims, you're going to have, you know, you could have something that hit the county as far as an influenza or something, which could drive things significantly. But at this particular point in time, this year-over-year measure, I think you can see you're doing extremely well. I will get into the division of how the medical breaks down in a minute when I talk about the plan design. What has St. Mary's County Public Schools done? Well, we meet with them on a regular basis, we talk about utilization, we talk about new products, because we are always bringing new products to the table, and we are always creating new products. This is a business that's ever-changing. I would say it's an exciting time to be in the industry, and it's a challenging time to be in the industry. But in 2012, July, your renewal for 2012, St. Mary's County Public Schools added the triple option plan, and it was a huge educational undertaking, and I have to give Greg's staff, especially Heather, great kudos, because we made sure that there were lots and lots of meetings, convenient for your employees, so that they understood the product, because it does help bring deeper discounts to the table. This plan, again, brings deeper discounts, but also I want to note that over well over 90% of the claims that are paid in the plan are paid in network, which means the people are really using that network, and I will explain to you the size of that network, that they're using that network, and those discounts are bringing savings to St. Mary's County Public Schools. And it doesn't mean they're getting denied anything, the underwriting, I mean, the medical policies are all the same across all of your plans, it's just the deeper discounts we have with the providers. Subsidy strategy, you also at that time changed your subsidy. You subsidize the HMO, the Pure HMO plan at 9010, and the triple option is 8515, and the PPO is 8020. That incentivizes people to move to the more cost-effective plans.
Yeah, but which is a better...
And the PPO, they're all accounts are looking at, what do we do with the PPO, because that's where our high-cost people are, and that's not where our discounts are. And most accounts are looking at the possibility of freezing that enrollment at some point in time.
I wasn't there, PPO.
Just to make sure that we clarify that for you, in the negotiations, it was agreed that once we get through two years, if we do not have a 10% reduction in individuals who have signed up for the triple option plan, that the PPO program would then be stopped, and what we would intend to do, depending if that happens at the end of FY15, would be to grandfather all those individuals that are existing in the PPO plan until they mature out of the plan. So that is there, because that is currently in the negotiated agreements with East Mick and Seasnick.
How do you mature over the plan?
Thanks, Greg. I wouldn't have known that component, for sure. The other thing we did was, we added what's called a plus 65 component to the PPO, and in the past, when a person turned 65 and became Medicare primary at retirement, they needed to move into what we called a traditional supplement to Medicare. Well, this product now has the capability of just letting them continue with the PPO, they go and they pay their co-pay, and Medicare pays, and then we pay. So it's it's very seamless for them, and they don't have to move out from one part to the other.
If you I we talked about this the last time when you were here. I'm on the CareFirst Blue Shield Federal. I don't have to join Medicare.
Board members, can we just wait and hold questions and comments?
I just asked, you know, I don't know if you remember that.
Until the presentation is over, please. Thank you very much.
Sure, I'm glad to address that when we...
Thank you very much.
Move on, thank you. Okay, so the next category is what has CareFirst done. I want you to know that one of the things that we always strive to do is maintain our networks, and our networks are the largest around. The PPO network has more than 960,000 providers, 5,500 acute care hospitals nationwide, and it's just as powerful right in St. Mary's County and all over the state of Maryland. The Blue Choice Network, which is Tier One of the triple option and the Blue Choice HMO, is the largest regional network in the area, and our service area is Maryland DC and Northern Virginia. It has over 32,500 doctors, specialists, hospitals, and includes more than 8,150 primary care physicians. So there is a wide choice of physicians. When this product first came to market many years ago, I couldn't with confidence come down to St. Mary's County Public Schools and say, I think you should put in the HMO, because the network was not developed. But it is very well-developed all across the state of Maryland and DC and Virginia now, so I with great confidence, your people are using that. I wanted to show you underneath, this just gives you an idea of the utilization and cost, and the first category is institutional, that would be your hospital, the second is professional, those are all your physician providers. And the visits and admits, this is your group in particular, November 12 from to October 13, and you will see that over 96% in both categories were paid in network, so the networks are working for your people. Out of network was 3.9 and 3.1. You're always going to find somebody that goes to somebody that doesn't play with anybody, and what we usually find is that those are specialists like plastic surgeons, because they don't want to be locked in for their cosmetic surgery or anything. So those are usually the types of specialists that we see that are outside of the network, but by and large, the network is huge and your people are using it. This is so we continue to maintain the provider discounts as well as CareFirst, and you will see here that of $45,271,692 bill charges, our total dollar savings for you was $24,772,259. So the overall net savings is almost 55%. That is a very important piece, because if we didn't have those discounts, you'd be paying closer to the $45 million. from, to October 13. And you will see that over 96% in both categories were paid in network. So, the networks are working for your people. Out-of-network was 3.9 and 3.1. You're always going to find somebody that goes to somebody that doesn't play with anybody. And what we usually find is that those are specialists like plastic surgeons, because they don't want to be locked in for their cosmetic surgery or anything. So, those are usually the types of specialists that we see that are outside of the network. But by and large, the network is huge, and your people are using it. This is, so, we continue to maintain the provider discounts as well as Care First. And you will see here that of $45,271,692 bill charges, our total dollar savings for you was $24,772,259. So, the overall net savings is almost 55%. That is a very important piece, because if we didn't have those discounts, you'd be paying closer to the $45 million. And that's just not acceptable in today's market. The other thing we've done, and this has been within the last couple of years, it's actually been up for three years. I think it went on your plan as a self-insured group a couple of years ago, and it's a work in progress, is what we call Patient-Centered Medical Home, which I will refer to as PCMH. I refer to this as a paradigm shift in the delivery of care. It is the brainchild of our CEO, Chet Burrell, and he has done amazing things with this. What this does is it actually ranks your members by virtue of their claims utilization and their, where they are in the system from the standpoint of their illness. You'll see on the left-hand side, advanced critical illness, multiple chronic illnesses, at-risk, stable, and then the one you can't read very well on this, but on this you can, is healthy. So, if you look at those numbers, one of your healthy members, per member per month, is costing you about $70.50. One of your people in the advanced critical stage, per member per month, is costing you over $3,400 a month. Multiple chronic illnesses, today, we are seeing lots of comodalities, that's what we call it, diabetes, they've got COPD, they've got congestive heart failure, they've got other, lots of things going on at one time. Those are costing you $1,120 a month, on average. And that number actually, for 12 over 13, has come down a little bit, which can be the result of some of the activities in the program. But what this program does is it says to the primary care physicians, "We are going to supply you data that you've never seen before on your patient population." And for the average practice, we have about 3,000 members in their practice. And we can now come to them and say, "This is what your Care First patient population looks like. And we need you to spend more time and concentrate more effort and be more proactive with the people in the top categories, especially the people in the multiple chronic illness and the people at risk as well." Because our goal is to try to keep people from moving up and get them to move down. If we can get diabetics to be compliant, we can get them to have their feet checked, their eyes checked, et cetera, et cetera, you can avoid a lot of the after-effects that happen if they don't take care of themselves. So, there's some things that we've done to help them, because we can't just say, "Oh, devote extra time, find time in your day," because we were well-aware that the average primary care visit is seven to eight minutes. And you cannot adequately take care of a patient with those comodalities in that period of time. So, we did some things very proactively. We created within our networks, and this is not a separate network, but doctors, primary care physicians can be designated as PCMH docs. If you look at our directory, it'll say, "PCMH." What that means is, we have given them an increase in their reimbursement rate. So, we've paid them more money. We've also brought care coordinators to their offices to help them. Now, they're not full-time employees, but we have nurses that are assigned practices. And they will establish a list of patients with that doctor, that those are your target people that need to be followed. And then they help the physician and the physician's staff to manage those patients. They will remind them of their medications. They will let the doctors know when they've been in the hospital. Today, most of the hospitals have hospitalists. So, that means they're not, you know, it's not your primary doc that you see down on this street that's coming over to the hospital. You're with a whole 'nother set of docs. Well, that's very nice for 24-hour coverage. The deterioration in that is that your primary, unless somebody lets them know, doesn't even know whether you've been in the hospital. So, the next time you go, they don't have any of that history. So, what this plan does, we have hospital transition coordinators that are in the hospitals that contact the primaries. The local care coordinators connected with the PCMH physicians are talking to the primaries. And the idea behind it is to set them up for a successful discharge from the hospital. It only makes sense to give these people what they need, because if they don't get it, they just rebound into the hospital. And one of the things that I didn't put in the presentation, because it's not an impact necessarily to you, but the hospitals now are being penalized. If they don't, if they have admission, readmissions within 30 days for the same condition, they're getting penalized today. So, it's really important that they monitor that care. So, again, PCMH is designed to concentrate the efforts on the sickest of people. Now, we want the healthy people to get their physicals. We want the healthy people to get their, their regular testing and their, you know, preventive testing, et cetera. So, we're not leaving them out. But we need to make sure we're concentrating on these other folks. So, again, we increased their reimbursements. We brought local care coordinators to practices to help them, hospital transition coordinators. And I want to stress that all of the programs are voluntary. So, if someone has been identified in a practice that would benefit from what we call a care plan, it's followed by the physician and the local care coordinator, then we ask the patient if they're willing to participate. It is in their best interest if they do. But you know, as well as I do, that there's certain people think, "Ah, you know, I don't need anybody with my care." They truly do need people with their care, and helping them through this lovely maze we call the healthcare system. I want to also let you know that we encourage all members to select a PCP. It's not required for your PPO. It is required for your Triple Option and your HMO. Currently, almost 3,000 of St. Mary's County Public Schools' members are attributed. They're already going to one of our PCMH docs. They may not know it, but they are. The program is in its third year, and the most recent reports are showing that it is bending the care curve cost. And to date, it's been around a $98 million bend. That's the goal of it, is to stop this and to start this. We know that with advanced technology and advanced procedures, you're always going to have escalation. But the idea is to stem it and keep it in control. Also, I think, critical for the success or the popularity of this program is, Chet made a presentation to CMS, Centers for Medicare Services. If you understand that when you get into Medicare, you have no care management. You don't have case management. You don't have any care management. So, the idea behind this is, if we overlay this program over the Medicare population, is that a possible way to keep Medicare intact and not have to get rid of Medicare or deteriorate Medicare, but just manage the care? Because I can tell you, I have retirees that are under 65, and they're in our care management and case management programs, and they're doing really well. They turn 65 and go Medicare primary, and nothing happens. They can go to 16 cardiologists a month if they want to, and nobody watches anything. And then they end up in the hospital in and out, because they've got all these drugs. It's a disaster. So, this program is a pilot program. We were awarded a $30 million grant from the federal government, CMS. And it is overlaid over a segment of Medicare enrollees, and it is proving to be successful. We'll wait and see what the federal government thinks about it. When we get into patient protection and affordable health care, it really began to surface in 2010, where, as employers, you were required to cover children to the age of 26. In 2004, you could ask, though, back then, if they had access to coverage through their employer, if they had a job. Today, as of 2014, you cannot ask. They can have another job and be 25 years old, and they can still be covered under your plan, under their parents. You cannot have a maximum allowed on your health plan. That came in in 2010. You all do not today have a maximum. Pre-existing conditions go away on dependents that went away in 2010. For all members, it's 1114. But you all have never had pre-existing condition clauses in your plan. So, you've been compliant from way back. Most recent changes, wellness is covered with no co-pay. So, your routine physicals, for children and adults, you won't have a co-pay now. Well-women visits, no co-pay. Covered screenings such as mammograms, colonoscopies, no co-pay. It's designed to help encourage people to get them. Money shouldn't be an obstacle. And also, prenatal maternity visits are covered at 100%. The other component to this law, which has graduated in, is employers must pay what's called Patient-Centered Outcome Research Institute fees. We call them PCORI fees. And it's a fee and a health insurance premium tax. Year one, it was a dollar per covered life, and that's not employee, that's member. And year two, it's $2 per covered life. And it's designed to help fund grants for innovative research projects. It's probably partly where the $30 million came from, for us to put CMS, I mean, put PCMH over the Medicare population as a pilot program. So, if it's being used for that kind of stuff, it can be very positive, a positive spend. Also, you are required to pay what we call a reinsurance fee, $5.25 per member per month, or $63 per member per year. That's intended to help raise money for the previously underinsured. We know when they hit the market, they're going to hit the market with some huge claims. So, this is kind of a backstop to try to catch some of those claims. It limits waiting periods on health plans to no more than 90 days from the date of hire to the date of coverage. Again, that doesn't really impact St. Mary's County Public Schools, because you have a much shorter waiting period for new employees. Another critical one is that employers with more than 50 full-time employees or mathematical equivalent must offer health insurance benefits to full-time employees with 30, an average of 30 hours per week or more. If they don't offer it, there's a penalty that's assessed. And I, this one, I can't say this has gone away for 14, but the penalties have gone away for 14. So, from my perspective, what I got from our people was, well, who's going to pay it, you know, give it a lot of attention if you're not going to get a penalty at this point? And medical, another critical one is, as of 2015, medical and pharmacy expenses must be integrated into the in-network, out-of-pocket maximum. So, drug has never really had an out-of-pocket maximum. Your medical plan has. So, now, there's going to help, it'll be helpful to employees to have an out-of-pocket max that, after that number is hit, they're covered at 100%. It's a protection they haven't had before. And the out-of-pocket max cannot exceed $6,350 for an individual, or $12,700 for a family. And we will be doing the integration of that out-of-pocket max for you, because you have your drug and your medical with us. So, that's really, in a nutshell, I did want to mention one other thing, as I talked about with the HMO and the Triple Option. And I don't have this for you, but I can certainly supply this to Greg to pass out to you. But it shows you the per member per month, and I just want to tell you this one. You want to put it on here? It shows you the breakdown of the per member per month and the value of the discounts that we're bringing to the table by product. Obviously, you would expect the lowest per member per month to be experienced in your Pure HMO product, because they don't have an out-of-network benefit. The next would be the Triple Option, and the most expensive would be the PPO. And I think it's important to see this as you are, it's not working, okay. It's important to, for you to see that, to know this number as you're thinking about what to do with these plans. Let me just tell them. So, and I'll get this document to you. The HMO per member per month averages $226.14. For the Triple Option, it's $285.14. And for the PPO, it's $434.33. So, that says to you, there's 150, $200 per member per month value in the discounts that the Blue Choice Network is bringing to the table. So, I think that that's, you want to see?
Technology.
It's okay. We'll get copies to them.
Yeah, that would be great. With that being said, I thank you very much for your time, and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Mrs. Allen?
Oh.
Questions?
That's hard to see.
You really have taken some very complex subjects and helped us to understand them better, both in terms of the Affordable Care Act, but especially in terms of what we are able to do for our employees. The managed healthcare systems that you've put into place with physicians is just extraordinary, because by profession, I was an ICU nurse for a number of years. So, people don't come, just did little packages of, you know, "This is the one thing wrong with me." It's, it's almost like an octopus with arms reaching out. There are just multiple things going on. And the better we can, better job we can do in taking care of our employees and their family members, the better it is for us as a system. So, thank you for helping us understand this better and for all that you're doing. And I hope that that project with Medicare, the overlay, works. I-
I do too, because I worry when I hear statements coming out federally that, you know, "Medicare's got to go," or "Medicare is costing us too much money." It's because it's not managed. And if they just take that extra step to manage it, I think everybody can continue on having Medicare benefits and being served by what they need to be served by.
Absolutely. And people need advocates. And if your family can't advocate for you, the fact that your insurance company can, to ensure that you're getting the care you need, is extremely important. So, thank you very much.
Well, and one of the things we found out when we embarked on PCMH is that your doctor, your primary care physician, really doesn't see the complication-
No.
-of all the things that have gone on with you.
No.
Because you take yourself off to a cardiologist, and a rheumatologist, and an allergist. The reports that we can show them are showing them all of that information. And sometimes they'll say, they'll see the drugs too, and they'll say, "Well, I didn't prescribe that." Guess what? This is all the stuff your people are taking. So, it helps them be better and more efficient at managing those patients.
And patients aren't always telling their different doctors the other medications they're on in an accurate manner. And that can have a significant impact on their well-being.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wash.
I want to thank you for coming to the Mother County to give us this excellent presentation. And the PCMH seems very promising. It is an advocate for the patient who interfaces with the doctor to go between the medications, all of those issues, to help the patient manage their care.
Well, and one of the other things that the local care coordinators will help those PC, there's those PCP docs with, is if a patient is struggling to get an appointment with a specialist that the doc wants them to see, you know, they'll step in and help schedule that appointment, because sometimes the patient just doesn't have the same push or emphasis on doing it. So, it's a stepping stone along the way, and they develop relationships with these patients.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The master.
Thanks for traveling down to see us.
Had a problem with the bridge today, but other-
Yeah, she did.
I enjoyed the trip to St. Mary's. I've been coming down here a long time, and you've really grown and prospered, and it's a great place.
And you actually simplified the explanation in the Affordable Care Act a little bit.
Thanks.
So, I'm not quite so nervous about it.
Yeah.
The Reader's Digest condensed version.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Groth.
Hi. You did a great job.
Thank you.
When I retired, I didn't have the right amount of years. They changed it. They lowered it. So, it's too late when they did lower it. But I hooked on to my husband, who has the Blue Cross Blue Shield, and he's still working. And I don't know what's going to happen. He's been told that, I've been told, is as long as he's working, you don't have to worry about Medicare. Now, I have some friends that are in the same boat, and both are retired, and they don't have Medicare. But they do have the Blue Cross Blue Shield, federal.
Right. And I think the federal program, because it didn't require them to have Medicare, will always take that into consideration, that that program is not Medicare primary.
It's a great program, and we have this thing where you can call a nurse.
Mm-hmm. Ask a nurse. You all have that, too.
Ask a nurse, which is great. I have called it before, and I've asked a nurse. I have called it before, and I've asked a nurse.
It's, it's a, it's a great resource to be able to find out in an, in an urgent time, you know, what should I do? Because sometimes you kind of panic.
And there is somebody right on the other line.
Yes.
Can we reissue that on EAC, just put it on the listing? I know we have it, but I think it's one of those things we have to keep in front of the employees at all times, if we just put it as a separate.
Yeah, and Donna, it's on their card too, I think. Yeah, it's on their ID card. But it's always good to put that stuff up, you know? You don't use it till you need it.
Yeah, exactly.
Don't you generally send out information to, I mean, I know you do through the program, send out information reminding people that they've got to ask a nurse? Do you do that for our employees as well?
We do that every opportunity we have for open enrollments, and we also have Vitality Magazine that comes out with some current things. And for an example, Patient First, which is, you know, that's one of the urgent care networks, they are now in our network, and they can be used as primary care physicians. So, there is a whole movement to be easy to use, and if we can encourage people to, you know, not necessarily use the ER all the time, and to use an urgent care facility or their primary care, those are also savings too. So, we're going to be emphasizing those things. You, you know, they close, and the emergency room doesn't close, so you, there's going to definitely be times. And you're always going to have your high incidence cases, your accident cases, et cetera. But wherever we can encourage the care to be rendered in the least expensive, but cost, but efficient facility, that's where we want the care to be rendering.
Also, I wanted to add dental. We hooked up with the GHA, because we don't have, you know, you can have a choice.
Yes.
And the blue, I think, federal eye. I'm now having, I believe, starting tomorrow, $2,000 worth of dental work. Now, of that, only have, only have to pay $1,000, but to me, that's pretty good.
Yeah, well, dental benefits were never designed, nor eye vision benefits, were never designed to be a paid-in-full benefit. They were, they're what we call ancillary benefits, but anything you can get towards those expenses
Is great.
is great. And, and they're not costing you all, as employer, a whole lot of money to offer, but they're bringing a tremendous benefit to your members.
Any other thing too for us? We offer the Flexible Spending Account. Heather's right here with us on that too, so when you have those kind of costs, you can contribute to that as well, which is good.
Absolutely, and we encourage people, as they look at expenses like orthodonture and stuff, take that FSA into account, because it's a good way to parlay.
Exactly.
And, and I tell people, if you're going to have something done, and you're, it's not urgent, then have it done like November, December, because the plan year renews in January. Use your benefit, and then in January, February, have the second component done, and you've got the, a better situation.
And it does sound complicated, which it is in many respects, but you all have been down with us, sitting with our people hand in hand. Heather's tremendous, you know, in terms of what she does.
I couldn't say enough about her skills.
The number of calls that she'll, she'll just take personally, and I hear that feedback from community members that she called back. So, board members, you're, your folk are in good hands with it. You know, we're doing everything to minimize the cost and manage that, I should say, but also in terms of the services and educating, all that's happening, and delighted that Heather's here to hear this as well. So, thank you.
You're very welcome, and I, again, welcome any questions that may come up after the presentation, and my phone number for my office in Annapolis is right on there. Thank you again for your time.
Did Peter have any questions?
Wait a minute.
Not done.
Okay.
We're not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We've got another 45 minutes of questions.
That's, that's fine, I'm, I'm very happy to answer questions.
No, no.
Do you have a question?
Peter, any questions? No question or comment, thank you.
I'll say thank you very much, and I'm really pleased, and we all are, that your trip down here was uneventful. You know, you had to go on around and make it a little bit longer. But, Mr. Norris, do you have anything to add to this presentation or discussion?
Just give me a sec. Look at me, I slipped down the door. Yeah, I can't get it back. I just want to thank Tricia and Donna, because every time we have an issue, every time we have a concern, like when we started the whole triple option plan, and a lot of our providers, doctors, didn't know how it worked, or what you got to do, or there's $50 co-pay if it wasn't in the doctor's office, they clear them all up, okay? And so, we just want to thank them for doing that for us. And I know that Heather got a whole bunch of phone calls when we first started on the triple option, but I think it's running more smoothly now, and we'll just see what the future brings, so.
I will just say I've, that I've, in my tenure with CareFirst, I've had the pleasure to manage this account for CareFirst for a lot of years, and I appreciate the opportunity to partner with you, because I think that's what this whole process is about. It's about us partnering with you to make it work for your employees and to do it in the most cost-effective fashion. So, thank you very much for that vote of confidence.
Thank you for coming down. Great seeing you again.
You too, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next information item. 2014 November Financial Report. Mr. Norris.
We'll make this quick for you. Let's see if I can make it a little bigger here. Last time when we were here, we had talked about the revenues, and we had the additional amount of money over here for other refunds. And those other refunds included a variety of things. That, as you know, also includes the Birch Oil Settlement, which is $47,000. This is the last year, so starting next year, we won't get any more. But some of the other money in there, there's $23,500 for the Patuxent Partnership, those were the donations from Patuxent Partnership. We had the truck that was destroyed in the fire for $17,000. And then, when we have old and equipment, those kinds of things, we put it off the government bid, and so, four, five, six, seven, a little over $8,000 of that is money that we've gotten back in from selling old equipment that we no longer use. So, that's why that's doubled in one year, so we have that. Again, down here, in terms of Department of Defense and the Impact Aid, we do not expect to see any money until late January, early February. They're just kicking back up, and as you know, I believe that the government's talking about a budget plan now, and so, we'll see how that rolls out.
Right, right.
On the finance side, we did give you some information down at the bottom. Again, special ed is the same that we had last time right here. That is, again, for our contracted therapists, and we will be dealing with that when we bring the January categorical to you to be able to move money around. That's really the only thing on that page. And then, again, a few things. Oops. I'm sorry, grabbed the wrong one. Forgot to turn it over. On special, okay, we did special education. Okay, again, maintenance plant, that is the vehicle that we have up here. You have some minor things down here. You have 150 extra on the property liability that's fully funded, so that's squared away there. And then, on salary and wages for capital outlay, what we did is that the stipends that were charged for all of the green school coordinators were inadvertently charged here. They will be booked back to the mid-level administration category, and that's $13,500. That will be moved back, so that will be all squared away when you see the December report. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, questions, comments? Mrs. Allen?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Walsh.
Thank you.
Great job.
Mr. Matthews?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
Good job as usual, thank you very much.
Peter?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Norris, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Madrono?
Test one. Okay, I'd like to introduce, since we've had All Things Finance today, a lot of different conversations, I thought, well, timely, I could pull them all down here before lunch. What I'm going to ask these individuals to do is to parade and promenade in front of you. If you could, this is like, so you know your staff.
Did not put down the red carpet.
Yeah, we do this on a regular basis, where we're trying to bring staff members in. So, what I'm going to ask you all to do is, it's kind of like, you know, who you are and what you do, and come by and then introduce yourself to the board. So, all of you are looking at me like I've got three heads right now. They don't get out much. Stand up, if you're in the finance department. Walk up here, introduce yourself, and then, so the board can see who you are, and you've already been up here, but tell them again.
Hi, I'm Vicki Maill, I'm the procurement coordinator.
Very good, and go ahead through.
Hi, I'm Susan Short. I'm Susan Shorter, and I work in accounts payable, and I'm also the junior accountant up there.
Absolutely, thank you.
Hi, I'm Leila Mealy, I work with the grants and the account downstairs.
See, 125s, I saw.
Robert Springer, coordinator of the county.
Okay, very good, good to see you, Rob.
Talk into this so we can record it.
Record it? We got it, that was Rob Springer.
Lisa Miller, fiscal compliance.
Very good, thank you.
Kathy, I'm school dude. Where'd you go?
This is real program, by the way. Just wanted to be aware.
Handheld purchasing buyer.
Very good, good to see you.
Karen Bresslauer, apparel specialist.
Yes, and every month, every month, it gets paid, right? Wonderful.
Every two weeks is Karen Appreciation.
Those who are watching on the air, don't get them, call her.
Rhonda Malley, coordinator of fiscal services.
Very good, Rhonda, she's a great person to deal with that too. There you go.
Heather Huff, insurance specialist.
And again, answering all the calls personally, I mean, I constantly hear about the public relations a small group does, and you're one of them all the time. Thank you.
Heidi Van Missick, I'm your budget analyst of St. Mary's County Public Schools.
And you've been with us a long time, haven't you? Yes, tell them how many?
Over 40 years.
Over 40 years.
Wow.
I'm Kim Sparshot, and I'm administrative assistant to Mr. Norris.
Very good.
Thank you.
And give them all a round of applause. Rather timely, they're conceding the recognition we're providing, and then some of the other financial matters. These are the individuals who work with Greg, in addition to the HR department, and we'll bring them in again too, to provide that joint collaboration. A lean, small group that takes care of lots of information and keeps that budget in check, and manages all of your accounts, and keeps everything where you are with a great audits as well. So, one more time, round of applause for all of you. Notice you don't want the attention, but we wanted to get the light on you. Have a wonderful holiday, everybody, great seeing you. Dr. Rask, back to you.
Thank you very much for keeping Mr. Norris straight and right on path.
Yes.
There I see that, now we know. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you very much.
Bye, good seeing you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, happy holiday, thank you.
Great, Rob, good to see you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so. The, yeah, let me finish the meeting. Yep, the next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, January 8th, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. in the boardroom. This meeting is adjourned.